I will not go forward.
I can't even.
What do we have to say?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I guess.
Take some control.
There's a lot of concentration.
This is only like a giant, you know, don't worry.
It was four years ago.
Break it down.
I'm gonna, if you see me doing one here, I'll need to back it up.
Did you call the row please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Terry Kabner?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, at this time, we're gonna have the swearing in of Councilman Jason Blair and Councilwoman Danielle McKenzie by the Honorable Judge Blenford.
Thank you, Mayor. You'll stand right there and raise your right hands for it. I state your name.
I am Jason Blair.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
That I will not knowingly receive.
That I will not knowingly receive.
Either directly or indirectly.
Either directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance.
For the performance.
Or non-performance.
Or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than.
Other than.
Compensation.
A compensation.
Allowed by law.
Allowed by law.
I further swear.
That I further swear.
That I will perform my duties.
That I will perform my duties.
As city council member.
As city council member.
City of Moore.
City of Moore.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, great. Okay.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is letter of commendation honoring City of Moore firefighter Corporal Sean Coffey and Midwest City firefighter, Major Kelly McLaughlin. I forgot that name. And, let's all let you do the honors, since these guys are doing it.
Thank you, Mayor. First letter of commendation. The Moore City Council would like to take this opportunity to commend Midwest City firefighter, Major Kelly McLaughlin, for his actions on March 21st, 2017. While off-duty, Major McLaughlin was visiting the Blazers Ice Center and witnessed a young man collapse onto the ice. He, an off-duty City of Moore firefighter Corporal Sean Coffey, came to the aid of the young man by performing CPR and using other life-saving measures until relieved by the Oklahoma City Fire Department. It was because of their training, calmness, and quick thinking in this critical situation that the individual was able to survive the medical emergency. Both firefighters exhibited their concern by visiting the hospital to check on the status of the individual. The City of Moore is proud to recognize such a dedicated employee and would like to honor Major McLaughlin for his exceptional conduct during the medical emergency. On behalf of the Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and citizens of Moore, we would like to extend our deepest appreciation and admiration for Major McLaughlin's service and dedication in the preservation of life and the true spirit of his profession as a firefighter and emergency responder. I'll go ahead and read the commendation for Corporal Coffey. The Moore City Council would like to take this opportunity to commend Corporal Sean Coffey for his actions on March 21st, 2017. While off-duty, Corporal Coffey was visiting the Blazers Ice Center and witnessed a young man collapse onto the ice. He, an off-duty Midwest City firefighter, Major Kelly McLaughlin, came to the aid of the young man by performing CPR and using other life-saving measures until relieved by the Oklahoma City Fire Department. It was because of their training, calmness, and quick thinking in this critical situation that the individual was able to survive the medical emergency. Both firefighters exhibited their concern by visiting the hospital to check on the status of the individual. The City of Moore is proud to employ such a dedicated employee and would like to honor Corporal Coffey for his exceptional conduct during the medical emergency. On behalf of the Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and citizens of Moore, we would like to extend our deepest appreciation and admiration for Corporal Coffey's service and dedication in the preservation of life and the true spirit of his profession as a firefighter and emergency responder. And I'd like to thank the Mayor and Council for their recognition tonight. I mean, with all the bad news and everything that goes on, it's nice to recognize when such a positive difference can be made by these individuals and proud to do it.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to say, I was actually gonna read them off. I was gonna have him present them to them, but we're not good. So, I have a long proclamation now. To recognize National Police Week 2017 and to honor the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy, whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in the communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Moore Police Department. Whereas some 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, over 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, including one member of the Moore Police Department. Whereas 20,789 names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas 394 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this year, including 104 officers killed or who died in 2016. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all the officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial 29th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2017. And whereas, May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all the fallen officers and their families. And therefore, be it resolved that I, Glenn Lewis, Mayor, formally designate May 15th through 21st, 2017, as Police Officers Week in Moore, Oklahoma, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and the communities across the nation, and that to further, excuse me, further remember their contributions, I direct all city flags to be flown at half-staff for the week. Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
If I could, Mayor and City Council, just tell you a little bit more about what we're doing for Police Week. I have some handouts there on your seats, you can look those if you want some more details. But, we're gonna kick off our Police Week on that Sunday. The officers of the Moore Police Department are wearing their morning badge covers, and we'll be attaching blue ribbons to all of our vehicles to remind us of the week. And of course, with the flags being half-staffed, we also get support from the Moore Public Schools. They also lower the flag to half-staff. Tuesday, we're gonna be at Moore High School doing a rally for them. It's about safety and security. Wednesday's a big day, Chili Cook-Off to raise money for the Oklahoma Law Enforcement Officers Memorial. So if any of you can cook some chili, even if you wanna mix up some wolf and some hormel, that's okay. We need some chili to sell. Last year, we raised $500, all that, because everything was donated by businesses. All that money went to the memorial. And, we've got some VIP judges. Chief Stillings is gonna be there. We gotta bring lots of crackers, don't we? Last year, we had 21 entries, I believe, so the folks were busy last year. And we got some VIP judges are gonna be there as well. You see on the handout there, we have Fredo from KJ103, Barry Trammell from the Oklahomans gonna be there, Lacy Lowery, Damon Lane. We also have Paige Carter coming from the Oklahoma City Thunder Dance Team Manager. And we're gonna have an OU coach to be named. But, we'd love to have everybody out there and please promote it. Say 100% of the money goes to the memorial. And then on Friday, we're gonna do our bike ride. The law enforcement officers bike ride up to the memorial. We leave the station about 8:30 in the morning, ride up there with escorts. Last year, we had 10 folks, officers from all over state, join us, so we've extended that invitation out. And we've asked Terry, if you'd like to ride with us. And if you guys wanna ride with us as well, you're welcome. We'll give you a junior police officer sticker, and we'll honorably adopt you for the ride. So, it's 12.5 miles, and the fun part of it though is right near the end, there's a nice steep hill. So you can get that burn and then just coast down into the memorial. And then we'll stick around for the memorial service afterwards. And we're really excited about that too, and the fact that's the first time that we're gonna have our color guard or honor guard there to be part of the program. And then, so we raised some money off that as well. We did a GoFundMe page, so that's not the big thing, I guess, anymore. You know, the Chili Cook-Off will be just fine. And then, Police Week ends and we kinda move on from there. So, does anybody have any questions for me? I can answer.
How do you get back on the cabrio?
We have learned over the years that not everybody's in the same shape and riding those bikes, and some of them have ridden, not ridden a bike until that morning. But we're gonna put everybody in a van or a truck, as we learned last year. Yeah, we had a guy that, yeah, took us about two-plus hours to get back, and so. But we have some serious riders that will go out there in their street, you know, their racing bikes, and they're back in five minutes. But some of us are on mountain bikes, a little more challenging. But we're gonna get them back. We're a little, we're gonna get them back. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, item two is the consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held April 17th, 2017. Item B, approve the minutes of the special joint work-study session held by the City Council and the Planning Commission, held February 27th, 2017. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017, 2000, excuse me, 2016, 2017, in the amount of $2,369,043.16.
Make motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider approval of a lot split located in the northeast quarter of Section 30, Township 10 North, Range 2 West, being west of Sunny Lane and south of Southeast 19th Street. Application by LD and Darlene Williams.
Mayor and Council, this property is located south of, south 19th Street. It's just on the west side of Sunny Lane. The total property is 27 acres. The applicant is requesting to split off two lots from the larger property. You may recall, in 2016, this property was rezoned to C3 with a PUD for mini-storage. The, this is part of the land transaction that will actually transfer that property to the applicant. And then, before she builds her mini-storage facility, she will come back to plot the property. There are two lots included with this lot split application. The first lot is on the north side, it is six acres. And that is the property that is currently zoned for the mini-storage. And the south lot is four acres. This will also be sold to the developer of the mini-storage facility, but she's holding this property in reserve, and it's still zoned agriculture. If you have any questions of me, I would be happy to answer them.
Anybody?
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? Anybody here to protest? If not, would you call for the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number four is consider approval of 2017, 2018 code enforcement abatement contracts with complete lawn maintenance and JW lawn service for code enforcement abatement services.
Mayor, Council, you may recall that this year, in an effort to simplify the abatement system in code enforcement, the city went out to, I will call it a bid, but we actually set the prices that we, the city would be willing to pay for the certain code enforcement abatement services that we provide. And we invited interested companies to submit their applications to be considered for this, for the code enforcement contract. This is a effort to ensure that the citizens are actually getting the best price. What we've seen over the years is abatement contractors wanting to add on certain things that may not be absolutely necessary. This will give us much more control over the process, and we think that we're gonna see a lot more consistent prices as we do our abatements. We did receive four applications this year, and we did review each application and assess the score. We based these on the provided references, their experience in the field, their available equipment to complete their jobs, and also the proximity to Moore. City staff does recommend two of the contractors that did apply, complete lawn maintenance and JW lawn service. We feel that by providing two code enforcement abatement contractors, this will give the city the flexibility to, to give each contractor the projects that they have the most, I guess, experience or the most ability to complete. It will also allow us to get to the abatements sooner than we have before and try to complete that within three business days. Do you have any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Move to approve.
Our second. Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If it gets really busy, and most of these, for the last couple of years, I've actually seen it kinda drop. If it gets busy, would you be willing to bring one or both of these other people back on? Do you want that authority to do that?
We do have in the contract that we can add more abatement contractors as we see fit. So we will be keeping an eye on the workload and make sure that we add people on when we need to.
I think that's the first time we've done the reversal bid thing that the municipal league recommends now. I think it's a good idea. We'll see how this works.
Right.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. And no other discussion? Would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider renewal of a contract with Crawford and Associates to provide the Finance Department with financial services on special projects.
Mayor and Council, this is a renewal of a contract that we've had with Crawford and Associates for the last two or three years. With the munis conversion, sometimes the Finance Department staff, they're spending all their time with munis conversion and then some of the daily operation stuff. We use Crawford and Associates to help fill in with that and some other special projects as needed. We would recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this?
Their hourly rates remain the same from last year?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else? Would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number six, consider extending an agreement with Servmore and Moore Faith Medical Clinic Incorporated for lease of a city-owned building located at 224 South Chestnut for a period of three years.
Mayor and Council, the Servmore Building right now houses Servmore, some other nonprofit organizations, and the Moore Medical Group. And Dave Evans approached me, the Moore Medical Clinic has outgrown the couple of rooms they have and would like to expand. Currently, that building is split in half, the one half being used by Servmore and the other nonprofits and the Moore Medical Clinic, and the other half has just been used by the city for storage. I've visited with the departments that have some items there, and really what they've said is all these things need to be surplused and auctioned or just thrown away. There's really no need to keep them. So, they're okay with abandoning that part of it. And the Moore Faith Medical Clinic has incorporated as a not-for-profit organization, and they're willing through private donations to put about $22,000 worth of work on that side of the building to bring it up to, up to what they need to do to be able to provide better services. And in exchange for that, they would like a lease, like the one that they have now, which is a $10 annual rent, and they pay the utilities. So, Dave Evans and others for Servmore are here tonight for the Moore Medical Clinic to answer any questions that you might have, but would recommend that we approve the lease.
Okay.
Is that generator of the property up? Is it working?
I'm not sure.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I'd just like to say, thank you guys for the job you do. Appreciate it. Let's call for the vote.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is discuss and consider the appointment of committee members to oversee the I-34th Street Bridge Project, it should be I-35, 34th Street Bridge Project. Hard word. You guys want to? I had two people in mind.
I like that.
Melissa and Danielle. I know you wanted to.
Because we're the voices.
Yeah, you did, I think you did say that last time. So, anybody else?
I think everybody else is okay with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good with that.
Anybody else want on it?
Do I need to make a motion?
Do we want to be all council people?
No, we like to have five people total.
Yeah.
So we need to come up with some other folks.
Jamie Shelton back in the band. It'd be real good, because he lives next to it.
As a citizen who lives like five feet from him, I wouldn't care.
Would you be willing to serve, Jamie? If you're called upon? Then I'd vote Jamie too.
So we're at three.
Okay, there's three. If you guys want.
Anybody else? Let's see hands.
I mean, I don't know if we want, I mean, I would like to be on it, but I don't know if we want that many council people.
Yeah, two's a knife.
I think we should maybe like a planning commission or another citizen.
Have we announced this on any social media forum or anything?
No, just a while ago.
Yeah.
A minute and a half.
Maybe we should open it up.
So, could we go ahead and say these three, and then finish up next meeting?
How about we let the planning commission pick two?
Great with that.
We have a planning commission back there. He'd be good. Yeah. What do you say?
I'm good with the planning commission.
Yeah.
Okay, now we just need one more.
Yes.
All right, good deal.
Maybe somebody from the Parks Board?
The meet tomorrow, we have to ask.
Okay, yeah, let's do that. Since it's a development, you know? Yeah, that'd be great. And that'll give us our third. Until that time, how about a motion to table till we come back to the next meeting to approve?
Make a motion to table.
All right, thank you.
Till next meeting.
All right. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting. Item number eight is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority Meeting held April 17th, 2017. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2016, 2017, in the amount of $701,024.14.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? What's it, consent docket? Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider receipt and acceptance of permit number SL-00001417011, Little River Park Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Rehabilitation Replacement Facility, number S20614, from the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality.
Mr. Chairman, Accountant and Trustees, this is the Little River Sewer Interceptor Project that runs from 4th Street through Little River Park to 19th Street. In the design process, by regulation, the sanitary sewer lines must be three feet below the stream bed when designing in a stream bed. The engineers couldn't make that work, so we requested a variance from the code. The city proposed to do a still encasement with rock backfill and extend the concrete sewer. This has been approved by ODEQ, and they have requested an official acceptance of the permit. With that, staff recommends receiving and accepting the permit. Do you have to answer any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa, or Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Thank you. Item number 10 is consider the renewal of the third-party administration agreement with Jerry Horton LLC, DBA, Consolidated Benefits Resources for $1,700 per month for three years.
Mayor and Trustees, Consolidated Benefits Resources has done a very good job as our third-party administrator for our workers' comp and our general liabilities claims. They've been doing that for about seven years. I'd like to recommend approval of this agreement. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kabner?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Appreciate the job you guys have been doing too. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item number 11 is the consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management Meeting held April 17th, 2017. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2016, 2017, Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2016, 2017, in the amount of $397,785.16.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Well, this is consent. Would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kabner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the City Council meeting. Item number 12 is new business. We have item A, citizens forum for items not on the item. We have no one signed up. Would anyone like to speak? Item B, items from City Council or Trustees. I had one, but it was a chili cook-off, so we've already talked about that. So anybody else?
What? What?
Okay. All right. Item C, any items from the City Manager or Trust Manager?
Couple of things. Mayor and Council, concerns have been raised regarding the intersection at Broadway and Eastern, so we're in the process of reworking the traffic lights, which we hope we'll have done later this week or sometime next week, and we hope that'll take care of a lot of the problem, but we will continue to monitor it, and if other steps are needed to be taken, then we will certainly address it at that time. I had the privilege last night of being on Glenn Lippert's radio show on KTOK to talk about the good things going on in Moore, and certainly enjoyed that, and always great to be able to promote Moore. We have a lot of good things going on. The budget meetings, Rhonda will be contacting you here in the next few days to schedule budget meetings. We're getting to that time of the year where we do that, so that's in the offing. And then on May the 11th, that's when we'll have our, that's when we'll have a public meeting regarding the 34th Street Bridge artwork. We'll have that scheduled at the station.